Six thirty folks away, call our meeting to order, thank all you for coming to be here this evening. Call our meeting to order, ask if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you would, please. This is our invitation.
Would everyone please bow their head? Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, we thank you for all of our blessings. God, we ask for special prayers to those who are sick, going through stressful times, and need your guidance and grace. God, we thank you for your love, mercy, and grace, continue to lead us in extending our own love, mercy, and grace toward others. We ask, O gracious God, to come to continue to mold us in your image. Lord, God Almighty, may your face shine upon us, continue to love us and all the citizens in this amazing town. In your name we pray, amen.
Moving on to item two, our agenda approval. Does anyone mind making a motion? Oh, introduction, I'm sorry, thank you. Mr. Ross, would you please begin or introduce?
Quick, Rollins Town Attorney.
Ashley Anderson, Town Attorney.
John Ollie.
Eve Clay.
Lynn Williams Devaney.
Tim Sessom.
Jennifer Robinson.
John Hamilton.
Jen Tann.
Leah Rucker, Town Clerk.
Jeff Beatty, Deputy Clerk.
Moving on to our agenda approval. Anyone mind making a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda minus item number nine, which is discussion and possible actions scheduling a July council meeting.
Do we not need one now, or we don't need one?
We don't know that we do, so I just wanted to take it off the list.
Who put it on there? Who, did someone, Twiggy?
I put it on with the anticipation that we would need to discuss some things, but I think we've got enough information to move forward on the Ward project tonight.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second. Further discussion?
Should the public comments be before the public hearing, or is it?
Well, I was gonna, I have a note to bring that up. The, I think we either need to reverse four and five, or we need to reverse five and six. So we have public comments in the middle of the public hearing and the adoption of the budget, so one of those two, I think, needs to be reversed.
I didn't know, I wasn't sure, what, is that?
So can I make another amendment to my motion?
Well, if you don't mind, can we hear from Twiggy and Ashley, is that?
So, as a part of the public hearing, you're required to have public comments on the budget. This is a special call meeting, you are not otherwise required to have a separate public comment period.
So it would just be for the, we would leave it before the public hearing?
Yeah.
Or not at all?
It, what is the nature of these public comments? Are they a part of the public hearing?
That's about all.
Or are they separate?
Well, public hearing would indicate during that public hearing, we'd hear from the public. So I think it's understood that number four provides an opportunity for public comments, and then public comments would be put on the agenda, so.
It used to be that way.
The public hearing, number four, would be the public comments on the budget. I don't know why there would be here public comments in the middle of the budget conversation. That would be a question.
Is it actually?
You can put the public comments anywhere you would like. You are not required to have them anywhere on the agenda because it is a special call meeting.
Okay, so even the, so we are not required to have them for the budget because we've already had public comments before the budget already?
Already had public.
During the hearing as well?
Already had a public hearing for the budget.
So given this is sort of a full reading.
What do you think, Mr. Doggett?
We, we.
I don't have signed up already.
We have, we do have votes signed up, we're both just saying.
Of course we can do that just later. Lynn, do you want to?
Oh, I was going to let Mr. Doggett finish his sentence.
Okay.
That was it, and I just want to make sure.
So, so there are, not for both?
Yeah, how are you going to do it on there? Since we've already, these things out there, people side speak for the budget and other public comments.
Since we've already had people speak for the budget, and this is a rather long one, and I anticipate we're going to be here for a little bit. I would say that there's a majority of what, change in it.
I'm fine, I'm fine with keeping it on there and moving it five before four or five. So public comments would be before the budget.
And so these comments strictly before the budget?
Comments are general, and then the public hearing, one would be just put budget.
Right.
That's your, that's a call, please, yes.
That I would suggest for the budget.
So these, these are just general comments, we leave it on there?
And I agree with Mr. Mayor, swapping public comments ahead of the budget.
Well, if you're going to make them before the public hearing, it would be before the public.
They're not before the public hearing.
The public, the public comments for the public hearing would be under number four, where it says "public" here.
So what do you think, where do we want it, something?
I would recommend switching four and five, or switching five and six.
Can I make a, a amendment to, to Mr. Vane's removal of item nine, to put other comments before the public hearing, which would be swapping four and five?
I accept your amendment.
So we swap four and five, so other comments would be after number three, announcements. Any other family amendments, or any further discussion? Do you have any final questions? All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, and the motion carries. So we have the agenda. So moving on to item number three, announcements. Anyone have any announcements?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I have some announcements. This is from citizens who have reached out. They just wanted to say thank you so much for hosting the housing seminar, training, I should say, and also providing dinner. Dinner was well received because it was during that time, and it made it easier for folks to get here and participate, so thank you staff, thank you Jeanette, and thank you council and the other sports that were here as well. Also, I wanted to thank staff and for hosting the fishing derby and also music in the park. They were very well received. I unfortunately was out of town, but even got pictures, great pictures of people having fun music in the park and the fishing derby, so just wanted to thank staff again for hosting us. We do have three upcoming event, well, excuse me, two upcoming events, but please note on Friday, July 4th, the town hall will be closed for the holiday. And then on Friday, July 18th, at 8:00 p.m., we will have movies in the park. The movie is The Wild Road Ride. It's rescheduled from June 13th, and it will be behind us at the amphitheater. And then on Friday, August 17th, at 6:30 p.m., we'll have another music in the park, and I will also be back here at the amphitheater. So, and that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other public, any other agenda, any other announcements, excuse me? Okay, we'll move on to item number four, public comments. Anyone who wants to make public comments, just please come up, identify yourself, give us your address, and your three minutes will begin then. Okay, public comments, Dwayne Crawford.
Dwayne Crawford, 106 N.C. Highway 150 West. I'm not keeping up with you guys too closely, but I do hear and know a few things, and I know there's some intent and interest in trying to react to the paper town challenge and to show that we're providing services and stuff like that. So I'd like to put it in your thinking cap to think about doing what the Institute of Government says is allowed, and that is instead of letting the fire protection tax be led by the Fire Protection District by the county, instead let that money funnel through municipal coffers and let the fire service be paid for. Fire service provided by the rural fire protection service provider be provided through town taxes, paid anyway. It's not a new tax, it would just reroute the money, and we get to realize that this is a benefit which somebody probably thought about. If that money is funneled through town coffers, we become eligible for a greater percentage of the sales tax distribution. Got the Institute of Government white paper here, and an example of another town in North Carolina that pays a rural, a rural fire protection service provider to provide their taxes. There's lots of, I found this in the, there's lots of towns in North Carolina doing this, and here, now we pass it down.
Gail Dunham.
Gail Dunham, 5805 Stonehill Drive, Summerfield. A lot to say. First of all, I don't think that this is a legal budget hearing. When the new agenda was put online, I checked this last night online, there was no link to the budget. I'm talking about the budget here, but there was no link to the budget. I had no way of knowing how many changes you might have made from the past versions. So I do not think that this is a legal public hearing because there wasn't a document. This document, I guess, was just handed out tonight. We never had a chance to review this independently or check it. I think the budget, public hearing should be more, it should be an accurate, an accurate meeting. There are so many things, I think the bottom is maybe most is the lack of democracy. You do everything you can to suppress public opinion and public participation. When you have some meeting, one meeting, Lynn said, "Well, I don't want them to hear us discussing." And you were talking about the money, you brought in Sebastian, you let him talk for maybe 20 minutes because he was all for the tax increase, but no one else was given any, any other time. It was, it was, it should have been, every person could have had the proper time. Your meeting in secret, this is government deposit, totally government deposit. You spend more time in secret meetings than you do in the public. And there's been times when you didn't, you made, you made actions in secret meetings that should have been made in public, when you hired Sebastian Kane. That was all done in secret, and you shouldn't, you can discuss it in secret, but it should have been in the minutes and approved publicly. But I mean, that's just, that's just one. Budget is, the budget, it's not really, it's not really a budget, it's just a spending plan. It's not true, and it's not honest, and it's not fiscally responsible. The first page here, you're saying how wonderful the town is, how much everybody really wants this. You've never had a referendum, you do everything to suppress public participation, just like now. Oh, we're not going to meet in July, we wouldn't want to have to maybe have a public comments if we did. Just like you canceled the meeting in February because you didn't want to have any public comments. And now, oh no, but fine, you know, move in August, and the manager's already said bulldozers will be here in August. So it's number, page number three, it's not true. People are opposed, if you look at the town plan, which you've already decided to trash, the most important thing is lower, lower taxes. People do care about it. And this page five, all new initiatives, you have no price tag on anything. It's just tax and spend. This is grossly irresponsible. There's so many other things within the budget. I only have part of the budget, obviously, I only have part of this. There's a lack of democracy, there's a lack of public participation. January, you decided to, January, oh yeah, we're going to do all the, all the in-house, we're going to do all of the maintenance in-house. Sorry, over there, and you had nothing, you had nothing for us. You handed out nothing, and all it's done is wasted.
Teresa Perryman.
Teresa Perryman, 7401 Berry Long Drive. I'm so glad for many years we finally get two public comments at a budget hearing. So what I first want to say is, yes, you're passing a budget, you're pretty much already rubber-stented, and you're going along this A to one, and y'all are already about to double in our taxes tonight for projects that really don't seem to be needed in this town. Not only that, is election year is coming up, and I don't see any fiscal conservative people on the board. You're nothing but a bunch of spendaholics, and y'all just need to remember that November if you're sitting up. Thank you.
That's all we have for public comments. Moving on to item number five now, public hearing on the 2025-2026 budget. I would say we're covering items five and six now. So we'll enter a time of public hearing in order to hear from the public. So if you filled out one of these, I'll be calling your name. Same as with public comments, please come up, give your name, your address, and you have three minutes to share.
Hey, I think that one of your guys' phones, the volume is on, if you could check the ringer, it's beeping, will we hear it beeping every time something happens? Well, someone's phone keeps ringing, so if you could all check your phone and make sure it's on silent, that would be great.
Gail Dunham.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I believe you need a motion to go into the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Never done that before. You want me to, I'm happy to do it, but we've never done that before.
I'll make a motion to go into a budget public hearing.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. The ayes have. So now we're into a time of public hearing on the 2025-2026 budget. Gail Dunham.
It isn't, Gail Dunham, 5805 Stonehill Drive, this isn't really a budget. This is just a big spending thing with no price tag on it, and the app is kind of funny, too. You know, less than a year ago, we had 10 people on payroll, including the six of you. Then we have 11 people on payroll. Today, we have 22. And January, Twit comes in here, "Whoa, we've got this little plan here, we're going to do all this in-house, and it's going to be less expensive." Then he goes out, spends $150,000, buys a new truck, more toys, and he probably still has to buy a garage for it, but it was never approved in the line item budget until March. And you're letting him do this, and you're wrong. You are legally responsible for this stuff. You've got these contracts, $575,000 was the first one on water, there's two more here because you kept spending more. You never approved them. Twit approved them and then just put it into the budget. You are legally responsible to approve them. You've never provided any information about these three projects. There's strong support for Bandera, but why is it Bandera number one in here? It's just a bare-bones saying, he said, "Well, someone else will have to finish it." In '22, you accepted, you accepted a grant from the county as if you would complete Bandera, and you're not. You are also exercising eminent domain. When you, when you approved a contract that allowed you to exercise eminent domain, and that's part of the budget, because it's all part of your spending plan here, in a bad time, you said, "Oh, well, it doesn't, the eminent domain, well, we won't use it." You're using it now. You're threatening people with A and Y. Either they spend it, either they sign over whatever you want in their property, or they're going to have to hire a lawyer. So you are all, all six of you, as far as I know, are exercising the use of eminent domain to try and force people to let you do what you want with their property. If there'd been a referendum, if there'd really been some public input. And the, the water tower, the water tower is going to co-mainage and destroy existing wells. We don't even know, I don't think you even know anything about it. Where's all the reports? Where's the reports, where's, where's the drilling, all of the drilling tests? And as far as freezing nickels, you've got contracts, you've approved money that you've never approved. The budget is pathetic. You've got, the other one, we've got $250,000 for legal expenses. I'm sorry, your present lawyer's $50,000 in one, plus Linda Vane's father with the ACP. You're spending a ton of money, but it's not $250,000. This document is not true, there hasn't been public notice on it. As I said, it was, whatever was going to be put out tonight was not on the website. It should have been linked to the agenda. So you never, you hand out something today, but it was not done in advance. What is so exciting from is the statute.
Teresa Perryman.
But you're all real happy, so.
Teresa Perryman, 7401 Berry Long Drive, again, on this budget, I've said many times, is to do away with those projects and put that money toward the Bandera Forest. Our budget is now up to $13 million, and it's just crazy, the money that's been spent left and right, you're nickel-diving huzz to death. And Alicia Flowers come and told me that she's going to run, so think, Ellen, let's get y'all something to think about.
Beth Kaplan.
That's good news. Beth Kaplan, 7979 Highfield Road. We were told on June 10th that the town's budget was revenue neutral. When you raise the income tax, you cannot be revenue neutral. Revenue neutral is when a taxing jurisdiction budgets the exact same amount of property tax, revenue, and dollars for the upcoming budget year as they did for the current year. Our property revenue will increase, thus we can't be revenue neutral. It can also mean that a change in tax laws or a budget decision is designed to result in no change in the total amount of revenue collected by the government or taxing jurisdiction. The town is going to bring in more revenue, it is not revenue neutral. We have a bad budget. The most updated version of the budget that I had access to was from June 10th, and it shows dipping into fund balance $59,000 more than was first presented to us. I'm also concerned about the merit pay number. Does the $25,000 include taxes and retirement? If it does, then what is the salary cost versus the taxes and retirement? And how do I know that the taxes and retirement have even been presented correctly? Because to my calculations, the FICA in the admin section should be $29,880, not $26,500, and the retirement should be $56,510. Plus, the town took 3% of employees' 401K, so that number should be $11,718, not $9,800. And how can we, as citizens, know how efficient departments are when expenses are not reported correctly? Or we've assumed that only the administrative department is going to get a merit raise? Is the maintenance, and is the maintenance department really not having employees? And how about those services the town is going to offer? We already pay for protective services, we've already contracted for trash services, and why exactly do we need lights up and down Stonefield Road? And do we really think the town is going to be able to offer these services without hiring new staff and growing government? If you believe that, I have a rich facility. And the rate, at the rate this town loses, do you really think that we'll have all of our big capital projects finished in time, and then this upcoming fiscal year to recoup our grant money? I'd like, I would still like to know the 1.1 million dollars that was given to us for fire protection is gone. The General Assembly is watching us, and we should put our best foot forward. This budget is silent. Thank you.
Those are all the public comments we have for our public hearing. So having heard all those. Do you need a motion to close the public hearing? All in favor, motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we close the public hearing for the budget.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, for a discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So our public hearing is closed. We'll move on to item number six, which is an extension of item number five, adoption of the budget. We're now open to, for, up to council members and staff members for discussion on budget items. Want to say anything about the?
Oh, yes. So there were a couple revisions from the version with the June, the town council edits applied. One of those, with the migration to the QuickBooks Online software, there's been a bit of glitches that keep happening with payroll liabilities, so that has affected the to-date figures for FICA contributions, so we've gotten all of those things corrected and amended, so there's been a couple of updates to the governing bodies, FICA contributions, and parks and recs contributions. And also, moving that has affected the fund balance appropriation was the historical committee, their project in consultation with Greg Allison at UNC School of Government. That particular project does not qualify as capital outlay, and that's why it was moved to a general expense line, and that has been amended, but otherwise, there have been no additions or changes from the discussion.
Further discussion? When were all those additions or changes uploaded to the website?
So I was under the impression that we were publishing a link, and then I realized that it was a PDF, because we have to have different versions, and that did not register for me as I was looking through all of these changes and dealing with this when we were in close, so it will be published today.
So, so help us not see.
That's correct.
So you're going to vote on something that we haven't seen?
Miss Dunham, so has not seen, nor can they see now?
I apologize, that was a misunderstanding on my part.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Is there any, we need to take a brief recess and allow Ms. Kelly to?
That's, that's a pleasure.
Would that be helpful or not?
I don't think that's going to remedy the situation.
No, I think that the budget on the 10th, there were some changes made, and those changes didn't make it online, as Ms. Kelly's just said. Although they were minor changes, they still were changes, and they weren't done online. What you have in front of you is a balanced budget with the ordinance attached with all of the changes.
It's very clear and legible as to what happened. Thank you for doing that.
Public does pay.
Further discussion, questions? Are there further discussions or questions from the council?
I'm still reviewing. I'm sorry, I'm still reviewing. I would like to make one additional comment. The budget was published, it was available for inspection at any time at town hall, and I don't believe we've had anybody come by and asked to inspect it. But we did follow the statute in public, this hearing, and that it was available for inspection.
I know a citizen that can inspect it.
But it wasn't linked to this at all?
We understand, Miss Dunham. I have a few questions, I just want to say, Ms. Kelly, how much I appreciate all your work on this, I know this is an overwhelming task to do for the first time ever, and, but I do have some questions. And I think Ms. Kaplan touched on some of them, but if you go to the admin, which it would be page 20, and the slides, the latest slides that you sent, administrative personnel, personnel salary and wages, salary and wages is 346, 600. The FICA on that one is correct, but under the retirement pension, which I think is at a percentage of 14.3... at a percentage of 14.3 of that 346, 600, you're showing 44,000. I did the math on that, I'm getting 49,737.
There is a contribution cap of 23,000, which has affected that figure.
Okay. On the, on the next line, on the retirement, 3% of 401K, 3% of 346, 600 is 9,200, and I'm getting 10,398.
Again, there is an annual contribution maximum associated with that, so it's not considered full salary.
Okay. And then on line, on that same sheet, on line 4010111, the merit, merit, I can't see the words. Merit. Full, thank you. 25,000, I think that's for the whole staff.
Yes.
Yet it's put in the admin personnel.
Yes, it's here at this time because it was supposed to be a range of 1 to 3% for staff members based on merit. That would be decided by the manager and council, so as that amount varies. That's why we decided to just kind of leave it here because it's at discretion. So it's not usually just allocated across salaries when we don't know the amounts and rates for each of the different staff members who are each different.
Okay. And then if you move to, I'm trying to say, I can't see what page it is. For the parks and rec staff payroll, I did this with the worksheet that was online. And so I'm trying to go to this one that you sent, and they take it to state.
And it's probably helpful to point out that the salaries were forecasted, counting for hourly employees of 90 hours of overtime. So as that is variable, and there have been discussions that we may change our personnel policies, so the FICA contributions were calculated at the annual salary, not including overtime.
What's calculated is regular, not including?
Excluding the 90 hours of overtime for all the salaried employees.
I don't find the parks and rec salary paid. I know that's what it looks like. Now, I think it's about page number 28, the word on the original one.
And it's still 20.
I bet it's page 20.
Parks and rec.
Yes, okay. So I see the 29881, that's a change from the other one. So that's good. I guess that retirement and that 401K offset is due to the max.
Yes.
Could you add, I need to do it with my phone calculator, so I could be wrong. Shouldn't the 534 is a change, that 225 is a change, and that 30,000 equals 662, 772?
Which line are you talking about?
I'm sorry. One, six oh, six, yeah, the total at the bottom of the proposed budget for salary wages for that section, it's like a total to 534, 522?
That line actually includes the events totals book.
Okay.
So from slide, slide 27. So if you add to that total, the math that you just did adds 75,750 to that.
Okay. So if you do that, it does equal 662?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So then the 662, when that goes over to the ordinance?
It's broken out.
It says operating services and personnel, 594, 442?
Yes. So that's the 662, 772 minus 75,750 equals 594,442.
Okay. And then finally, on page 16, item line at the very bottom, the 3.2, remember that tile is, or used to be highlighted, it still is not?
It is.
It looks like that is the DOT matching grant fund. It looks like we're expecting to get 3.2 million from the state.
Sure. This is purely an estimate. The grant documentation does not provide a maximum or any clear numerical values in it. It just states that it will cover 80% of the actual construction costs. So because we've not had an opportunity to send that out for bid, we do not have a current, updated, accurate construction estimate. So that's why that's highlighted. It's purely an estimate.
Okay. And I get that. But if that is 3.2, and I think it says on here, this is the revenue that we're expecting to spend 3.2, in order for us to receive 3.2, we would have to spend 800,000. Now, we'd have to spend 4 million to get 3.2.
Of that 3.2?
So where's the 800,000 reflected?
The 640,000. And so the reason why I did not include that is because, again, this is such a variable number. And the fact of the matter is, because it still hasn't gone up for a construction bid, the likelihood of us having to pay our portion of the construction cost this fiscal year is very, very low. So that amount, when we have an actual figure, will be booked into next fiscal year's budget. That was my rationale.
Okay. I think, though, we're supposed to, you know, put into the budget every year what we realistically think we can spend between July 1st and June 30th. And so we would have to spend 11,118,000 from all these grants in 12 months, the way the budget's lined up.
Correct. So the other thing that you have to keep in mind is the 5.5, and what was the other one, 3.3, I think? Those have a hard deadline that all the money has to be fully expended, no later than December 31st, 2026. That means it has to be expended, bill paid out, and we have to have applied for reimbursement by that point. So this is the remainder of the grant funding that we have outside of what we have reimbursed for the design work so far. So that's why I put, you know, as long as we kind of are on target for that, we really do need to expend that in order to keep that grant funded, because of the clock, it's a very long clock.
But if we're looking for 3.2 in matching grant funding, we would have to spend 4 million to get 3.2.
So that's the NCDOT. Again, I wasn't comfortable trying to project a cost because we don't have anything concrete or even an estimation that's outdated at this point.
There's no question. I agree with that. But the 3.2, I mean, you said 640, that's taking 20% off of the 3.2. So we would have to fund that 640 in order for it to be balanced. If they are doing 3.2, I think the number is 800 for 4 million. But even if it's 640, to your point, doesn't that number have to be reflected in our budget, either 640 or 800?
We just don't have an accurate number. So right now, until we can go up for a construction bid, that's why I stated at the last meeting that all three of these projects would likely require a budget amendment because none of them are in a final design phase, and none of them have had an opportunity to go up for an RFP for construction bid. So instead of just like spitballing and shooting a random number in the air, I'd rather have concrete figures because the cost of materials, construction and labor have fluctuated so dramatically for 2022. I'd like to see like so accurate numbers. That's why currently it's just the grant funding that we have left and are hoping to spend to stay on target for that hard deadline of December 30th to 2026.
And you said this is likely going to go into the next fiscal year as well, so it's going to be something that we?
Yes.
But.
I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Somewhere the 800.
I completely understand what you're saying.
Have to be collected.
Yes.
Or there's no way we get the 3.2. If we're not spending 4 million, there's no way to get the 3.2. So we're spitballing the 3.2, but we're totally ignoring the other 800,000, which the only place it could come from is the fund balance.
Fund balance, yes.
Right.
But since that's just a pie in the sky number, there's literally no basis to get that close to on target. That's why I opted not.
Well, yeah. But our.
We don't know what our timeline is. We don't know how long it's going to be. It's going to cross multiple fiscal years as well. So.
We just said we have to spend it all in a year.
That's, the NCDOT is separate from the RFP grant for Bandera and the water tower. It's two funding sources, it's the Gilbert County and transportation.
But those two separate funding sources?
So the NCDOT does not have a hard deadline like the two Gilbert County RFPs?
All due respect, I just don't understand how we could call it a balanced budget when we're forecasting collecting 3.2 million from the DOT when we are not forecasting what we would have to spend to get that 3.2. I don't see how that is balanced.
Well, wouldn't it be better for you if we could, again, this is.
I'm more concerned about what's legal than what's good for me. I mean, I just, you know, I just want to be right.
Right.
And I know, I know we have to be, have a balanced budget, and I don't understand.
Well, even this 3.2 figure is very theoretical, to be quite honest with you.
Well, I understand that, and I'm with you on that. But if you, that you're going to be theoretical, you have to be theoretical on both sides of the equation.
I completely understand what you're saying.
Because there's no way the 3.2 could happen without us doing 4 million.
I just.
And there's no way we can do, I'm sorry, and there's no, we can do 4 million unless we spend 800,000 from the fund balance.
Right.
In addition to the 143, 143,244 that were already appropriated out of the fund balance in a year, when we're practically doubling the property tax for citizens, we're going to add, we're going to appropriate more from the fund balance. I think that never has been appropriated absent of when we were purchasing assets, and we had assets to offset what was spent from the fund balance.
So I just didn't feel comfortable, again. This is why I was kind of asking for feedback and help as far as what that timeline would look like, how far we were going. I didn't feel comfortable erroneously gluing the budget to put in a projected cost because we don't even know if that 3.2 million is what the grant ultimately is going to be worth until we get that construction bid. I fully understand your point, and I would be happy to make that edit at 20% of that 3.2 figure. It's just very, very low. I'm just not comfortable with that. But that's what I understand.
I think that, to the mayor's point, I mean, I certainly understand, I've had this discussion with Jen. I mean, if it makes y'all feel better, I mean, allocate 640,000, which is 20% out of fund balance, if that's the pleasure of the board. We're probably not going to spend it. You know, that allocation's probably going to go up. Again, we don't know what these projects are going to cost. We can't state that enough until it goes to bid. Not being disrespectful, trying to make a point, we don't know. So we're throwing guards on guard ward blindfolded.
So even if it's allocated, it's purely unlikely it's going to be different to this year?
Correct.
There's a good possibility that these things.
If y'all feel like you want to allocate that 640, then we can do that right now, and it's legal to do that, just put it in the budget.
But once we find out something more definitive, if you leave it the way it is, once we find it definitive, what is it going to cost more, how to put in there, then we can make that adjustment to the budget as we go?
Yes. Y'all can always do budget amendments, up or down.
Mayor, since you said, could I ask you, how long have you had this question? How long have you been sitting on it?
What does that mean, sitting on it?
I think you should have brought it to us sooner so we could.
I did bring it to us sooner. I brought it to him on June 10th.
But not all of council folks can hear this.
And obviously, obviously, Jen's done a lot of work, a lot of good work. I appreciate that, but I talked to him about it on the 10th.
Did he talk to you about it?
What? Excuse me, what?
It's just the first time council.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kelly.
Okay. Well, then speak loud enough for everybody to hear you now.
It may be necessary.
If I said what, obviously, I didn't hear you.
Then no confidence goes that the chairman of the board wants to do it.
Well, you know, yeah, go ahead, throw it down.
I do think probably you can even relieve that down with somebody else issue. You don't have a very good temperament. Ms. Kelly?
If there's one person in the room, I don't think I need to speak to my temperament. He's sitting two chairs to my right. So I'm calling a meeting back to order.
Well, if you don't mind.
I owe this council nothing. I did it to try to help, and that's what I did.
Did Ms. Kelly should just let us know, did he bring this specific question on June 10th?
No, you don't want to hear it.
He did. He asked questions about the grant projects.
And did he tell you about the 80% that it should be a different number on the 10th?
We did not have much to be specific. Like, he did ask a question about the grant projects and.
And what did he ask about the grant project on the 10th?
That was not balanced. And he had questions about where, how that was going to look.
Did he explain to you why it wasn't balanced?
No.
He just said it's not balanced.
The public's.
I think, I think that it is obvious that, I think there's still work to be done to get to the end of this, in order for it to be right. In addition to that, I don't think that the message that the manager, no, the message from the manager, our statutory budget officer references the budget expenditure attending 865,619 that was presented on June 10th, that obviously does not go with the current presented budget, which is 13,200 in sum. You know, there's just corrections that need to be made, and this is not correct. In addition to that, I don't understand the move to basically double taxes to citizens for something that has not become law. I don't, I don't know why we're trying to act in front of something becoming a law and creating expenditures and a need to double taxes to the citizens of Summerfield. I mean, if A-1 passes, which I don't think it will, but I could be wrong, if A-1 passes, we could always call a meeting then and adjust and deal with it, but then we're dealing with facts, we're not dealing with possibility, we're dealing with facts.
And to counter that point, though, I mean, it's more of a defensive move. So if you're trying to make sure that you, I mean, you know, I mean, without a doubt, the only reason why we're looking at raising taxes at this point is because of the General Assembly. I mean, I don't think any of us would ever be discussing that. And it's been recommended by the FICA's committee. When the FICA's committee talked about it, and they made a recommendation. Mayor, did you tell them that you thought they shouldn't make that, did you discuss with them that, with the points that you made now, did you make those points to FICA's committee?
I wasn't there.
And did you find that they recommended it?
So now you're going to blame raising taxes on me?
No, I just wish you would have told council.
I wish you would have told council earlier so we would have had time to talk about this
rather than the very last day.
There is another reason, there's another reason for increasing taxes, and it's not just A-1. A-1 is a piece of the pie. The other piece is everything that you look at, all maintenance, all materials, all projects, whatever it is, every single thing has increased for us, the town of Summerfield. We have not raised taxes since 2014. We have not raised taxes since twenty fourteen. Every, everybody else gets cost of living raises, et cetera, et cetera. Our town has not gotten anything that adjusts, that adjusts to what the new expenses are. And we need to be able to pay for our stuff and not, I thought the goal is you're supposed to spend your fund balance on special projects. That's why you have a fund balance. It's your rainy day fund. Where there's something that can be placed, like Bandera Farms for the town, then you go to your rainy day and you pull that back out. If not, I mean, we should be able to do this. Does everybody want taxes raised? No. Do I want my taxes raised? No. But I understand the why behind it.
I agree with Councilwoman Devane, Mr. Mayor. And in my reasoning for proceeding with this, with this budget and which improves the increase in taxes, I, I echo. I, I don't want to see taxes increase either, but we have, we have not increased taxes for a very long time. Very, very long time. We all are living in reality and know that expenses have extremely shot up, especially after the pandemic. The, what, what's in front of us is, at this council, is a lot of projects. A lot of projects that had been discussed, have been engineered, and had expenses has occurred. And now we're at the point where we're close to putting a shovel in the ground and actually making these, conceding these fruition. And in order to, to pay for the additional costs that this town has accrued over the years, to pay for the projects that's, that's nearly right in front of us, we, we have to make a tough decision.
How much will it cost?
Hi, Ms. Dunn.
Any estimate?
I agree with understanding about taxes and back. If y'all remember last year, we did discuss raising taxes last year, last year's budget. But I don't, I don't agree with raising the taxes to fund services when we're not sure exactly what the services are and how, I'd like to see a plan before we refund the services. Because my fear is that that money will be there and it will be appropriated to something else. I mean, I understand we're all, we're checking on the, on the budget and all that. And I certainly understand that, that I just, that fear is in you, that that money will be used for something else. I think with the services, that we need to wait until at least Jason comes back with the matrix that we paid him to, to come up with, and then come up with a plan. And then if we decide that the services are, are what we want to do, we need to then do a budget amendment and put it in.
And the, and did Jason recommend this five percent? He did recommend it on there. So the consultant that was hired by the town to recommend certain things to be done, the consultant has recommended this.
Yes, sir. To clarify that, he recommended that we go to the towns that are incorporated in year two thousand and four to go to a five cent tax rate and to add services. So this budget has some money in it to do services. Certainly, we're not going to start any new services till they come back before this council for y'all's approval. So the money can't be spent. We're not authorized to spend the money. So you're going to get another look at those services and really go on what they are. I will remind council, you can only raise taxes one time a year. Two, so.
Finally, before the April, we're finally being proactive as a town. We have these wonderful projects that are coming together. We can't, we can't do anything until we all vote yes for it. And we can always do a budget amendment. And if the money's still left there at the end of the year and we get to do one of the services for whatever reason, then that just goes back into the coffers.
Why not do it? Just not put the money in there?
Because I think that we need to show we are a town, we are moving forward, and we need.
I've been a part of this since twenty twelve. And I was the mayor when we lowered the taxes in twenty fourteen. And, you know, we've always been able to have a balanced budget. If you look at expenditures that have come out of the fund balance, same year, our assets soared and have continued to grow over what's been spent out of fund balance. We've always had the fund balance. We've always had a balanced budget. So I guess my question would be, if you, if you go through this tax increase tonight and A O one doesn't pass, are you going to, are you going to vote to move the taxes back or in some portion? Are you going to vote to move it back? Because we're justifying this tax increase by saying it's going to move us, it's going to move us to the two thousand standard and five cents and.
We're going to re-fund? You're going to re-fund this?
Mr. Mayor, I'll check the bar for that.
Yeah.
And I, I, I only have a question or two on this, but I'll, I'll try to. Sure. So like, like I said just a few minutes ago, A O one is only a partial reason on why we need to increase taxes. I think it's been quite evident that we need to do that to pay for the projects and the ongoing expenses of this town, regardless of A O one. But this, you guys, the town that have noticed, talked about it last year already, and it's up again for discussion this year, or at least so it makes, it makes sense. So the second part of the question was, could taxes change again? Absolutely. Taxes could go up, taxes could go down. That is at the board's pleasure at the next, uh, next year's budget.
I took a call during the workshop. Did the mayor bring any of these issues? He was in there. Okay, he was in the workshop.
And so may I add one last thing? But, you know, one of the things that we talked about at our retreat, and some of us actually went to some additional education, and that is strategic planning. Strategic planning is something that this town needs to be actively thinking about what the future looks like. And so there's, there is an expense to that. There's an expense to the continuing education to a lot of our new staff. All of that costs additional money.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Appreciate you.
We could have an extension come up with and then figure out.
Ms. Dunn, Ms. Dunn, it's time for the counselor. Thank you.
Attorney Anderson, if we were to vote tonight, and we don't know the answer to this right now, or have it been written? If we, if we vote on this tonight and put it as is, you know, I think I heard the mayor say something, so you're always going to have to validate it. Whether it be anything illegal about voting for tonight and then adjusting or making amends to this again, if it is, it would be a free judgment.
You are required to adopt a balanced budget. You can make changes to that budget at any point in time, including tonight after that hearing. And you can also adjust it as your manager advise you, upward, down, at any point in the future.
Given what you've heard about the, and again, I'll, I'll put you on the spot because, and attorney, I know we like to think about things sort of at, you know, twenty, maybe China, and then talk about it together, and then come back to us or something, if you think ready. His issue is that the, the two amounts match exactly. And one of them is supposed to be a percentage of the other. Does it have to be that way, the balance supposed to be tonight? We know these numbers are nebulous, we're not sure what they're going to be initially anyway. Or do we need to go ahead and modify it or it to be legal? And I realize that is putting you on the spot at the latter battle. And this could have easily been brought to you several days ago.
Issues that relate to the budget are usually confined to the finance officer and the manager as the budget officer. I don't know that it is routine to ask the town attorney to provide comment or advice on that. And if that's what you're looking for, I do not think I can give you an answer on that tonight.
Attorney, did you run this budget by anyone else? Who's, who's giving us a thumbs up on this?
Well, we, we've gone over it several times. We also had two outside finance officers look at it and said, yes, it is inviting.